Before we get started and do the pledge of allegiance, I just want to point out that in case anyone wasn't aware of the first exit location, if we need to exit the building, I think the best route is probably to go either this way via ten as far as best route. Go this way and down to stair hallway to the first floor of their store. That's something that we need to start doing at every council meeting go forward. So hence the change. All right, if everyone arrives with pledge allegiance, go ahead and start it. Thank you everyone. Our first order of business is to meeting of the board of professors, the town council is also the board of professors. We're at that time of year, that fun time of year where it's set the municipal tax rate. So our first order of business is to sign the tax commitment for fiscal year 2034 and set the municipal tax rate. I will say, I know that the staff has spent a lot of time looking at this to come up with the options for us and it really made some huge gains, I guess I will say this year for us financially to extend that work anybody, a big chunk of money back because we're at music fun this year. We're in really good shape. And I think things are looking good from a mill rate perspective. I'm sure Jen and Tim probably have a little bit that you want to share with us, so I'll let you guys.
No, I will not. Good evening, as a chairman of the council. In your package, first you will see this. These formulas, these are the state named revenue sheet. And what they show you is these are all the numbers that we have to put in to calculate the minimum tax rate or maximum tax rate. So ultimately, the big factors here that affect what we do, now we calculate this, I'll say for most of us, we very clearly know and number one, line number one, total taxable value, valuation of real estate, that's the one that the assessor spends from April to now figuring out the actual value of current value of our of our assessment. And then the next one going down is taxable property, I'm not going to go through all of them. But having been down line seven, you see the county taxes added in municipal appropriation. We get financing plan amount, then local education appropriation, what we paid for the schools. That becomes a total corporation and then we add back in the revenues on lines twelve and thirteen. At that point, the next to be raised is line fifteen, which is fifteen million. The fifty one seven ninety three, and then that's calculated into the mill rate with the overlay, which is line twenty three. For those of you, the overlay is the amount of money that we set aside for a baby reimbursement. Depending on what that is. So that's the crystal ball, right? Because we never know if there'll be a lot of abatments and a lot of there'll be a big one. So generally here is when it's not a lot of abatments, try and keep the overlay fairly low so you don't need it when you want to use it. If we don't use the overlay money, it goes back and it doesn't give you fun at the end of the year after the audit. This year, a particular event occurred, two things that made a huge difference on the calculation form in the total taxable valuation real estate, nine number one. We had a sole final line online, fully taxed. And for the first year, it's going to be taxable, then it'll go into non taxable after. So this year we get the value, we also get the value of the transfer of the gas station pipeline. The gas station pipeline, the assessor's done a little valuation request form. They did not fill it out, did not give that. So that being the case, then the assessor has legally right by law to place in the best value on some, for some reason, something. So she used the build value, which was twenty million, five hundred thousand. She used the build value, twenty thousand five, twenty, twenty million, five hundred thousand. The up and downside, the upside is that if that's a good evaluation of a concept raised, that's a billion dollars of property value. Which that gives us new tax, not new tax money, but additional tax money to offset the budget. The downside is that because they didn't apply, tell us what their actual value is, they could file an abatement to assess that value. They would have to show what that is. Going forward in the next year, we think that value may be more than we need. The gas station, but it's a different kind of gas station than now, it was valued at even. And that's a
Action pump station.
Action pump station. What we think is a better value, bigger value, we'll take that next year. So this year, that's what ended up being there. So with all these calculations, we run these numbers in this formula that we have to submit to the state. And if you look, then it gives us in the calculation, it gives us line seventeen and eighteen, gives us a minimum tax rate and a maximum tax rate. That's the tax rate we can't, we can't by law, we did a set, we tax rate somewhere in. And then that'll tell us what we get for taxing it. And based on the number you pick, changes the overlay. So this particular case, if you go to go to sheet, the, the, the what is she that says the mill rate is on line nineteen to fourteen thirty eight? So on this calculation, that's the maximum that we could, about the maximum we could yield for taxing. That would give us a seven hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. You don't need, I don't think you need that much anymore. The one time you probably do that, is when you do finishing your full revaluation coming online next year. You probably want a big overlay because you're probably going to have a lot of abatments, right? There will be mistakes made no matter how you feel, how perfect you do. So if you go to the next sheet, over to line nineteen, says the mill rate is at fourteen point fourteen, point zero fourteen. That shows you that a current oil is fourteen fifty four, this would be fourteen, this is dropping fifty four cents. This will give us a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar overlay. If you go to the next one, line nineteen reads point zero one three nine eight, thirteen ninety eight. That would give us a three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty dollars overlay. And then if you go to the last one, it's line nineteen, it's thirteen ninety six, and that gives us a three hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty six dollars, right, that's all. That's how it's calculated. If you look at the spreadsheet we gave you, we put in all these numbers and a few extras. Within the spreadsheet on the left hand column, you'll be able to see that current taxable health value, the current mill rate, you can see what you're currently paying the taxes. Actually, why don't you go ahead and explain this side, and then I'll do that side.
If you want to look at the middle side, where it says the median town school, fiscal twenty three, it had four hundred and twenty five thousand. With the increased valuation of the practical town, that would now be down to about almost four hundred and seventy two thousand. So in the different rates, as we go down and change the mill rate and change the overlay, the middle boxes will show you what the increase could be annually. And if you break it down into a weekly increase. And then the furthest column towards the left would be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar home, which now would be valued at close to a hundred and ninety four thousand. This is very average, so it won't go higher, it won't go lower. So the two, none of you look at the right hand side, it's summarized again with the total valuation, what we have to pay for county tax, the school for our budget, then the ticket consideration revenues. And then the two that we highlighted, thirteen ninety six and thirteen ninety four, were the two closer to the middle range of the overlay that Tim and I feel very comfortable with one of those numbers. You also can see how much the school could carry in the municipal. If you reach thirteen ninety four, how about we break down forty two cents for the school, eight dollars and ninety two cents. I'm sorry, that for the school, tell me what'd be forty two cents municipality for us would be four dollars and fifty cents of that thirteen ninety.
So one of the things with the mill rate going down, taxes still go up, people say why? Well, inflation. And having seen this chat, the valuation of the property goes up with the control. So in reality, if everything was zero across the board, except our budget went up, and then we had a new property valuation in, with this mill rate, taxes would be down. But when the school budget goes up, county taxes go up, inflation goes up, evaluation goes up. No matter how much I put the tax rate down, what we're doing is we're pushing the increases. There's going to be an increase, we're just pushing. So if you look at a home that has a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, and you take the thirteen ninety six overlay, there increase of one hundred and sixty seven dollars a year, that would be two dollars and twenty two cents a week. If you took a M and M house, and it was, start value was set at four hundred and twenty five thousand, and you can mill rate went down to thirteen ninety six, with the overlay three hundred and fifteen thousand, their taxes go off four hundred and six dollars, and it would be seven dollars and eighty one cents a week. I can tell you, being in the town manager business for over ten years, I don't worry about four hundred and twenty five dollars a home, and I don't worry about seven ninety or twenty five dollars a home. All my core mortgages have been on a very low end of the system. If the people can't pay, can't afford to pay a hundred thousand dollar mortgage, they probably can't buy their food, those are the ones we've loaded in, we've never. So we try to make this as amicable as possible. I, I think that we should, I'm more comfortable with three fifty than I am two ninety three, either one to me is okay. Only because as we start the reevaluation process in the pipeline, we don't know if there's a possibility of an abatement. I will answer any questions. Also have a few questions coming in.
I'm just, I'm noticing that the sorry. Five, five. That to financing plan route changes, and I'm just wondering if you can explain that.
You have three numbers in yellow on these forms. If you change one, it changes all three of them. So when you're changing the mill rate, that's the valuation within the tenth down gets taxed, that's the same rate as you already asked. So those are all moving pieces together. Another question, as far as the senior tax stabilization, anything we need to make in the future, is that still something that's on the horizon for us?
Senior tax in why they should go there is only going to work for one year. But then it's been long, that here won't run at the, it's being put into another program. And I, I don't have a fund, I don't know if you have any additional information of the collaboration.
I, I know that there are different parameters put on it, it wasn't totally dissolved. But it was, I think they put a income limit on it, and so it's not going to be totally gone, it's just they changed the rules on it.
It's going to be more like the no, with the, most of that exactly, it's going to be more, more like the ultimate strategy.
And now, can I add another question?
So if we go with thirteen ninety six, which gives us an overlay of three fifteen one eighty six, where is that going to put us in a crystal ball? Looking at that share. And I'm asking a hard question that you really can't answer, right?
As far as watching.
So I don't, I, I have zero issue with us going down on the mill rate. What I don't want to do is then turn around next year, no yield factor. We've tried over the last eight years, at least that I've been here, to try to keep it steady, so there's not a big jump. I'd rather not go fifteen next year for thirteen ninety six. If you think we're going to go that direction, let's go to fourteen instead of that's more money, or it's less of a hit next year. But we'll pay our taxes back.
I don't foresee anything, we look at the long term, long term, what gas is best we can afford. You know, the economy will, all those things, majors. I don't see anything, I mean, we do something to have a profit.
Right.
And I can't control that. But at this particular point, I think it was very safe that you know, thirteen ninety four, thirteen ninety six. I, I would say if, if everything on the crystal ball is right, we should be able to stay there, because a lot of the increases we had this year, the budget, we're not going to have next year. Not hiring enough, no, we're not buying, no police power. There's a lot of increases to be gained this year, we don't have the fund next year. So I don't see that much of a major increase, like, you know, actually, I maybe I, I don't estimate it. I'm not going to hold you to it, I don't mind a half a point, three quarters of a point, I just don't want to jump a point and a half.
Right. I, I don't want to have to explain that to everybody sitting in front.
That would be, that would be overly one of the reasons. So, and I don't see that happen, okay? A caution, piece I can't control, the educational school thing, right? So can't tell you, they decide about putting a new school on the federal school. Oh, nothing wrong.
Or the housing market, the best can do, isn't going to be going down, so.
Right. It's just something we try to do, I know you've worked on it and looked at it, I just want to make sure the public understands that yes, we could drop it all the way to thirteen eighty, but it wouldn't help us, if it actually hurt us, or our board. I just wanted to ensure that that's, that everybody understands. And, and another piece of this, everybody's all excited about the revaluation, my vibe is going to go through. It's actually not, I'm talking to Burn, what's happening. So if you're involved with it over the last twenty years, you didn't do any kind of adjustment. Burner's been here and friends before him, or her, have been doing increment adjustment. That's what you're seeing here, the increment adjustment. So it's trying to keep up with the market value, so you don't get a big hit when you do the rebound. What the rebound will do, it just encompasses everybody easily across the board, brings it back to a lethal base. That's just been, that's pretty much everything we had in the department involved.
Thank you all, thank you for all of this great preparation. I feel like these spreadsheets have gotten to be so intuitive and so much easier to process for us. So thank you Jen, I know that that's all you're doing. I know Tim touched on this a little bit, but I just want to really make sure that this point hits home for the public. We as the town council, we have a responsibility over, this year, thirty three percent of the overall taxable budget. The taxable money that I guess they were asking the public for, the rest of the school and the county. So that's just only a third of the money that we have responsibility over for. But then we do have this responsibility now that I'm keeping all of the members of the school, the county, from the municipal perspective. And we have the responsibility of setting the tax rate. But we don't have a lot of control over what's driving the Uh, but we don't have a lot of control over what's driving the overall, uh. Number that we need to collect for our tax perspective, and so, uh, as John was saying, you know, we have been very, uh, I think, prudent over the last few years to. Adjust and try to bring the tax rate down where we can, but not create all these swings and ducks all over the place. Uh, and it seems like, no matter what, given the minimum and the maximum that we have so far this year, we're, like, we're. We must lower the tax rate this year, given nobody thinks we can have it, so. Personally, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the pink, the thirteen point nine six, um, and the additional overlay, I do think, I hear you on the. Uh, the pump station piece, and you know, there's a little bit more, um, uncertainty than the maintenance upcoming, so I think it would be wise for us to change the larger number there. And any other questions? There's ten, I think we're, at this point, we just need a motion to set the tax rate rate.
Right, Madam Chair, I move to reset the two thousand twenty-four. No rate tax rate thirteen point nine six. Here's an overlay of during the.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye, I'm gonna call John.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Aye. Mallory, both ayes, motion passed with a five zero. Thank you very much, Jen and Tim and staff for making this process very easy for us.
Okay. We have a member table, they have to find.
Yep. Great, all right, order business number two for, um, our board assessors meeting is to sign your county assessors' report to turn. Um. So I always forget, this is essentially, um. We need to acknowledge the time that's in, to acknowledge the amount that we're gonna be paying. Is that correct, Jen? Yeah, it's essentially a bill from the county. All right, so, um, we either need, essentially we need a bill from the county, um, charging the town council for with, uh, the sum of four hundred and nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, that's the portion of, uh, the overall county tax bill that self-serve is accountable for. Uh, so I think we just need a motion to, um, sign the York County Assessors' Return for fiscal year twenty-three, my court.
Madam Chair, it will be assigned to York County Assessors' Return, Indiana, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, ninety-six cents.
Second.
Question and second, any discussion?
Just a bit of information, so the public can hear this, what would happen if you said, we're not gonna pay this, we've already motioned down. And I actually had a councilwoman, I wanted to put the test link here, they wanted to test the waters and say. So we've all legal, and the county attorney called us back and said, you have ninety days to pay this, and if you don't pay this. We have the right to come to your town and take any property you have town by forfeiture for the value of your tax. That's what happened, just to put a point of information, we don't have a choice.
Good to know. Sorry about what, right?
I'm sorry, I said bye-bye fire truck.
All right, your motion on the table, any other session, I will take a vote, John?
Yes.
Yes. I.
Yes.
Yes, now I will get the motion passed with a five zero. And, uh, it is now sixty-two, we can go ahead and put the board of assessors meeting and we need our town council meeting. Um, we have all five councils present, town manager, town manager, and town clerk. And our first order of business is a pretty minutes from our last meeting on July. Any edits from anybody? Take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the meeting minutes for July twenty-fifth, twenty-three, as of.
Your motion and second discussion. All those in favor, say aye, John?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I launch the passes, five zero. Thank you, and next we have, uh, the transfer warrant, it looks like maybe we're dwindling down on our last fiscal year warrants. Some of those ones are like a loose ball. So just for the public, we just, the other meeting too, but given that the fiscal year just started, we sort of have a lag with bills and stuff coming in from the past fiscal years, we have to. Every, at every meeting, until that all is all signed, two different warrants, one for last fiscal year or one for current fiscal year. So the first one is small, uh, dated August third, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of four thousand hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. Uh, go ahead and make a motion to sign that warrant for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
The division. All those in favor, say aye, John?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. I motion pass it five zero. And the next one is. This is our first school payment of the year, right, if I may mention that. This would be for August. Uh, so the, the second warrant is for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, dated eight, three, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of. One million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents. I'll go ahead and make the motion to sign, warrant dated eight, three, twenty-three, for fiscal year twenty-three.
Second.
Question and second, the discussion. Uh, I think the only thing. Is just to note is that the whole unit is included in this, um. And it's got up to seven hundred and fifty thousand for this upcoming fiscal year. Anything else you might add?
The county bill is a different four hundred and ninety thousand as well.
Okay.
That's most of it.
We don't give a thing, so.
Okay, um, so your motion on the table, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, done?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Mallory, both ayes, motion passive, five zero. All right, um, we're done with all of our public administrative business, up next, reporting presentation, I think. That we've got someone, who can hear? Um, up next, public comments, is there anyone in the room or on Zoom that would like to, um, address anything that's not on the agenda later on? If you'd like to, if you're in the room, please come out, put your name, state your name, and where you live, and say those for those of you that are. Yeah, if you just come up.
I have a, a letter that I'm gonna read on behalf of a number of businesses, did you guys want a copy of it before I read it?
You can read it.
Read it first, okay. Okay, so this is, uh, this is a letter on behalf of. Uh, my name's Roxanne Foulon, um, I'm representing four oh six Main Street, as well as, um, a list of seventeen businesses. Uh, Attitude Salon, The Crown Boutique, Early Bird Cafe, End Grain, Flourish Midwifery, Fogarty's, Great Works Chiropractic. Happy Valley Beer and Wine Garden, which is us, um, HS Mercantile, Nonos Kitchen, The Lawrence Law Firm, Lee Franks. Oddfellows Tavern, On Point Tattoo Company, uh, Portside Real Estate Associate Broker, Jackie Muske. Retrospect Barbershop, and The Stage House Inn. So. Uh, dear South Berwick Town Councilors, as business owners in South Berwick, we're writing to express our enthusiasm and support in moving, in quickly moving forward with the creation of a downtown revitalization plan. We are of the understanding that without a documented downtown revitalization plan, our municipality cannot apply for state-funded grants aimed to improve our business district. We, the undersigned business owners in South Berwick, personally feel the immense and imminent need for funding to help revitalize the B one district. We are also asking that town council, with the guidance of the manager and economic development department, release the already allocated. Of already allocated facade grant program funds, and are requesting that the municipality work diligently to implement new community revitalization efforts for the business district. We envision South Berwick as a town where people want to visit and stay and enjoy the many different experiences that our town town has to offer. And we hope that you'll work to develop, procure, and implement every resource that could assist as many local businesses as possible. We'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves as members of a newly formed Downtown Business Alliance. In addition to supporting each other, we aim to become a united voice with a goal to help make the regeneration of our community a reality. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working together in the moving forward of all this. Sincerely, the members of the Downtown Business Alliance.
Thank you, um, it's good timing, because later on in our agenda, we have a item two, put together in our P two together. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments from anyone?
Hey, my name's Dave Bradley, I live on four hundred Emery's Bridge Road. Um, I had a bunch of questions and, um, suggestions for tonight, but. I understand that most of them are gonna be covered in under new business, so I'm gonna wait, hold off on these questions, and if there's something, uh. I feel I need to address, I'll be back next week, but I would like to, uh. Uh, congratulate Councilwoman Costeller and her husband, John, today's their twentieth wedding anniversary.
Congratulations. Thank you, any other public comments, any other big events going on? All right, we'll go ahead and move on, uh, up next, we got our unfinished business comp plan update. Uh, I know we don't have any supporting docs for this, or Jessica, did you take it later on?
Um, I can take a stab at it, so the last comprehensive plan.
Sorry, the flight's not on.
The last comprehensive plan meeting that we've had, we are starting to pull together our goals, policies, and strategies. For implementing the comprehensive plan, and with that, these action items get assigned to specific groups. Um, so we're looking for feedback from the town council as far as what implementation of the comprehensive plan wants to potentially look like. Uh, whether or not that's the meeting of the town council, or if the council considers an implementation committee, uh. Just up for discussion. I don't know if you've had a previous. Experience with new plans, updated plan.
The mic's on, I can't hear you.
I don't hear anything.
Can you at all?
Definitely.
Okay.
Um, so the implementation, once we wrap up the comp plan. Um, we, the comprehensive planning committee needs some feedback as far as what implementation we look like for South Berwick. If it's council-led, or if there is a new implementation plan, group that gets put in place, um, just looking for feedback from.
So you're meaning, are you meaning like a decision that's evening us to what, how we want to. Implement some dynamics, yeah, perfect. Anyone have any?
So, uh, we're already compared with the council. Process is, one, the documents already been adopted, and I think we used that for me, on that form. Last week, so the original documents already adopted by the town, adopted by the state. Now it actually, the exact same process, the same process. Going forward, they have to get it together, um, the complaint committee should hold a public hearing. Their balance of, except for Friday, they should hold a public hearing. But then, once they hold a public hearing, and you approve what you have, you get it all done. Then you s, you hold a public hearing, then you have to go approve, also the complaint committee approves it in a minute. That gets sent to the town council, same thing, we treat it exactly like the others. You'll review it, and you have to approve it, or just approve it, that's your approval, and then it gets sent back to the state for adoption.
So if there are action items within the goals, policies, and strategies, and we're looking to assign those to a group who will be responsible for making sure this happens. Um, you know, is it appropriate to just know the town council for a lot of these, or?
You can't, you can't do anything unless it's approved. Right, you can't, if you don't have a legal working document, all you have to do is hold off, and so until it gets to. I would, I would tell you not to invest any money or anything until it gets to the state, because once it gets to the state. They, they tell you to, that they want changes or documents, sometimes I've seen it, sometimes they're passing perfectly, and other times I've seen them, they click it back. Two, three times, so, but usually. The, all the implementation pieces, all that stuff, is done, you can do it ahead of time, but the actual. Moving forward with the document as a process, isn't until it gets finalized and authorized. Because until then, it's really, it's not an authorized file.
Right, and we're just in the drafting period at this point, but we wanted guidance, if, that if it was appropriate for. You know, our committee to assign things to the town council, or if it's going to be a different body. Once it's approved by the state.
So she's really looking at, or coming from the perspective of, okay, we know that there's all this procedural stuff that we have to go through, hard to get approved, but how do we turn the document into action?
Right.
Uh.
And so, I don't know if that's all.
You turn document.
So. Your, where the comp plan is, is basically, you can, the comp plan, I mean. The comp plan, you can, my folks can basically, um. Continue their work that they're doing right now, which is creating, creating the, um, rules and strategy, just not assigning that. That would, that would just, would, would, how to, how to go about assigning it, right? And so we can't necessarily move forward with the assignment until we have it officialized.
Right, so first, the first thing Phil stated was, have you had a public hearing on the final law? Don't do anything with our public hearing on the final law in place, first step is, get your public to. The, the public doesn't like it. Then I go ahead with the action steps, if they don't like the action. So I would say the next step for the comp plan committee, at some point, is once you get the document finished, you don't want to have a public hearing. Show the public what the document is, what the, you get some feedback. Based on whether that public hearing is positive or negative, or zero cause, or if we fix any changes. Map the back to make change, you may not. Then from there, you have that document, I will, you know, you can create while hanging through. I just recommend you do whatever you want. The next step is, you assign it to the council, you guys review your, your public hearing, then move on. If after that, you want to start making assignments, I think that's, you know, the comp plan, maybe they, you know, usually makes with the assignment. You know, handing them out, but we really don't think it's done until the plan gets somewhere through the finalized process, you still got several months to go.
But, and, and if I'm understanding correctly, the, the assignment may, is part of the document that needs to be approved and finalized, correct?
That's what it would perform.
So my inclination would say that all of the items, any action that are coming out of the comp plan, I feel like the town council, at the end of the day, should play, if they're, they want to be accountable body. And then if we choose to form another committee and give them a charter, or give this committee a different charter, or whatever, like, I think. That, I feel like that's the easiest way to do it, do you think? And then we can kind of figure that's whether we want to do a committee at a later point, but at the end of the day, we're responsible, I think.
Yep, makes sense to me.
Okay.
Right, she has Denise Vaughn, she's on the phone, but she also has a lot of experience, you know, a lot of what she's done.
Okay. Denise, are you there, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I'm happy to chime in, thank you, um, um, Chair Mallory, for letting me participate. Um, just wanting everybody to know that we are ending the phase of what you call the, um. Uh, the inventory component, and so from here on in. Becomes the direction setting, the goals, policies, and strategies, and so the public will be absolutely able to be involved, and then. Uh, clearly, uh, create what I would call the direction. Um, I think, um, at this point, um, it, it's clearly in the public's view as to what they want to see South Berwick look like. Um, moving forward, and so, um, that will happen. And then those recommendations and strategies based on public hearings and, um, other, uh, public engagement meetings. Will direct how people feel South Berwick should move, moving forward in the next ten years. And, um, I, I think, you know, at this point, it's, we're at a good, good position. And I think, um, there's a lot of opportunity to op, you know, to operate, moving forward with a lot of the other plans and strategies, whether it's the traffic study, the downtown. Uh, the, the town hall, um, study, um, all of those other, um, reports. Will all incorporate how we're gonna move forward with the, uh, comprehensive plan. So, um, this is, it's just, we're at a great crossroads right now, and, and, and I, I say that, you know, um, because. That's where we are, and so, um, I think we'll be, we'll be fine, so. And, and, and I, I say that, you know, because that's where we are. And so I think we'll be, we'll be fine. So I hope you can hear me okay, but.
Yeah, the council, like we can hear you recording all the photos in the room, I imagine it may be a little quiet. But I think we're okay to these. Thank you so much for your, but. So if I understand correctly, the go-forward process for the comp plan needs to, we're going to need to schedule a public hearing. Then the committee will vote, and then it'll come to the town, town council to officially be approved by us. And then if it goes to the state, and then as it relates to a thing for the goals, I think you have consensus for the council.
Understood. Cool. Thank you so much. I'll take it to the comprehensive plan committee. It's August. In this month, yep.
Cool. Any comments, anything you would like? Anyone from the public?
Your own thing.
So can you come up to the podium and?
Uh, close query, ten explain. So actually what I was referring to is hearing out here. I don't know how it's going to be on the recording of the computer land. It's bad.
Thank you. All right, we got some new business. We've got several items. First is cannabis establishment for, for the high power.
And Chair, we grant the cannabis license for the high power LLC. This is for a few years downtown. There's been local violations where our planning, police department. Second.
Thank you. Motion in the second. I will just say, I think we need to end the motion with an expiration date. So we put an expiration date of eight, nine, twenty-four on that.
Yes, sorry.
Any other discussion? Can you follow us in favor of granting high power LLC cannabis license to expire on August nine, twenty-four? Say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed. You're up. Okay. Next order of business, we have a request from a resident on Bitter Sweet Lane to request our closure of that road for about six hours on Saturday to come around. I'm not sure it go block party, because they're trying to block right now. This order of business, I think, is not something that I feel like I've ever dealt with before, John. I'm kind of looking to you. I don't feel like you've ever actually formally seen action.
No.
But I, but I know we're like in this process of like trying to do things the right way and continuous improvement. So.
I haven't seen one. Usually they just, to the neighborhood, they just close it off them. That's how it goes, but.
Right.
Under the state law, I say stat, I'm, I'm just, I don't, I'm doing by law.
No, keep us.
The, you know, not allowed to close off a road unless it's for construction. By certified people, I'm a construction company, police department, or fire department for emergencies. Or create, you know, or create a social event, the only ones who have the farm, we can just pull this one off. Okay. Just, that's all of them. Now we're done. I know we've never done it either, but when this is a private person asking to close a private road, why is always something happened, we can say we did it right.
Yeah. Uh, in this instance, I mean, we don't have a motion as people yet, but is there like a seizure or signage or barricade or anything like that?
As John said, you just, they just close off the road and have a hootout or what? What will happen though is if you authorize it, that authorizes us to have the public works department open up barricades so that they can officially pull the road off the barricades.
Okay. That, that's what I was wondering.
At three o'clock, and they open it back up at nine o'clock, and public works can pick up barricades, it's authorized by the council.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah.
Is that over time, Ted? At nine o'clock? Would they, someone would be calling special or?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get them up at nine o'clock. We just all set them off to the side, we open the road, set them off. We'd have PD, we'd set them off to the side. PD would probably at the bottom. Sunday, PD would probably propose it at three, and then at nine o'clock, drive by and get back out and just set them off to the side. Public work, open them up on Friday before they go home or everything, whatever they do. Same thing you do in Aggie for the county. Yeah, same idea. So, and then in a way, on Monday, they'll just.
And, and I, that is question is about Aggie. And so coming up here, I expect for the town will, or somebody will come up with closing the road in October or?
No, just put them on. It's just always been that. We can do it, but it's just always been that.
But how is it different? My question, is it different?
I don't know. What do we do when I, I mean, they put up barriers at the end of certain roads to keep you driving. That's police department does that?
Of course.
Police department, usually, most of the time, the homeowner, that's something that path rock should be moved here, so. And that's.
But it's not like that's probably something how we, you should probably take a similar.
If you're doing it, yeah. Somebody should authorize it. I mean, absolutely. So that people will, what this time does is gives us the option to, people just don't want them, you know, people say, oh, let's say, hey, they're local area. Yeah, they haven't walked out in the city on a Sunday and Monday at two, three o'clock, you know? So I mean, it's the only real authority for a road, blue fire, nurse, stairs.
Okay, so I think learning for us is probably that October, we need to have an item on our agenda for this, correct?
Should be, whoever, somebody must log it up. Welcome to a small town that was not authorized. It just happened. That's what, love a small town. It just acts. So if we can just happen to, whatever you want to do.
But no, Valerie's right. Valerie's correct. If we're doing this, then we should do it in.
Trying to make it kind of so hard to do things the right way, by the law.
And I'm just, I'm just saying, if one of them authorized, why you talking about that?
Yeah.
Then there's going to be a whole bunch of sticky stuff, and you can try to work on that.
Okay, Madam Chair. Yes.
I'm all for community gatherings, community spirit. My slight concern is there are between twenty-six and twenty-eight homes on that street. And Ms. Norwood says, we decided on Saturday, September ninth. Is that all twenty-six to twenty-eight homeowners that live on this street? Because my concern is where it is not until September ninth, maybe we could ask that Ms. Norwood to go to the door and make sure everybody's on board, because where it is on weekends, like service industries are unorthodox right now and are being forced to work on the weekends because of the crazy weather that we're getting. So if you're going to have somebody coming to mow your lawn, and the only day they can get to it is on Saturday, but now the road's closed because there's a party. So I'd like to see just a little more communication from the people on that street that everybody is okay with it, and it's not just three or four houses that this place is too. But like I said, I'm all for block parties. I think it's, you know, great to get the community together, but I just want to make sure that everybody on that street is aware and on board with it before we move forward with this.
Okay, what's on the next meeting? Reach out.
I don't know. I mean, I think I, I like, I guess, what are our expectations here? Are we trying to get everyone to help? Because I.
I just want to make sure that everybody is aware. And, yeah, yeah, I don't know. I don't know where this is. There's no precedent to this. I don't know what the right, correct answer will be to that. But if, if it's a fifty-fifty split, a fifty say yay, a fifty say no, then maybe we should consider done. But if there's only one or two houses, you can please some of the people some of the time, and not all the people all the time. So kind of falls in line with that at best.
Can we table this till next meeting and reach out and say, see if we can get, you know, maybe some signatures or something from some of the other partners to blame? Okay, did that hold everybody? Any motion on that?
And Chair, we table this until the next town council meeting. So we can reach out and find out if they have everybody on board.
Second.
Good motion in the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. You're up. So we'll bring this up at our next meeting. We should get the ample time for. Okay, any, anyone from the public want to comment on that? Okay, moving on, MMA Risk Assessment Property Service. Uh, so this is a report that we received from MMA in reference to the municipal property risk assessment. Actually, I'm not going to read this. Tim, I think you probably need to overlook what you said.
Yep, so this was from property risk assessment from MMA insurance carrier. They come and inspect all buildings annually. They don't, they inspect different buildings annually. When you say that, not all, different building annually. So this year, the town hall, all of the fire stations, I think it's all.
Didn't see it, but they don't typically would.
So um, they came down and did all of them, and he will be, what he identified as he has a risk assessment that needs attention to be corrected, and as I stated, in the what that the with no dating post immediate action, the doctor John Waterberg from MMA, along with sixty days to present you to the council and protect this solution. We are requesting work done in sixty days, only to have plenty of remediation going forward till we're prepared to get completed in time when there are asked for time when it was, he said, probably before next year's infection, like I'm there. So the thing you've seen here on the outside exposures, we need CO detector to put them in on the property town office. He just has buildings in need of agents. He identifies primary concrete on the windowsill on the side out front. One change on the playground regarding taking care of the at the community center, the arc lane is of water crack, seeping into the water, cracking and freezing. Wants that expected, so he wants the outside water only, I specifically said all buildings, but no. Only exposed damage. Apparently what we can see for exposed damage. Wants a civil engineer to pull submitted to the council, to the MMA. So we hired a civil consultant, they gave us a price of five thousand dollars.
Five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Five. Um, that's in there, that's in there, what is it?
That I ordered.
Yeah, and so that'll be up next. To give us an evaluation, and then tell us what's next on that. Specifically, just looking at here, you can see the prominent stock, and I made a better adjustment. That's that.
Okay. So MMA have given us this report identifying particular issues in our, in various municipal buildings. We have sixty days to get back to them, and our plan, they don't have to be addressed within fifty days. But we need to make sure that all of these issues are addressed by the inspection next year.
Correct. You know, there, there are water leaks, crack, concrete. We have to install a flammable gas detector at the kitchen at the, you know, the center.
Okay.
It's up. I'll move at the stack of the steam warming hot tubs to be repaired at Sagan. Um, and then the, the building stopped here, and the only other thing was was the windows where it's working, checking for where there, there are windows that don't operate, that the windows have to operate at a limited frequency of emergency grass in the event of an emergency. So you're not talking about replacing the whole window, the whole building, windows that are opposite, you know, staff will buy.
So the town will also put the gas detectors in. Concession stand.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Uh, there's a lease concession stand. I'm assuming that's got to be the one fault.
There was two, one maybe in one of our, yeah, and then the community center and gas.
Would you see that one, Jerry?
I don't think there's a picture for it. It just says this applies to all town roof buildings, but probably international gas plants, including at least. There's not a picture.
Oh, yeah, I see. Yeah, we'll need to protect it.
Okay, so we, we look at all of these issues that are listed.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Here, we've, we've got a plan. If I think about the concrete, our ex order of business, and so consultants make some review, base and review for you to get that report and and for that, so we've got traction on our way to deal with that. So same, same similar story for the windows, where we've been getting quotes, and that's even like and I'm generalizing a bit here, the rest of them are probably smaller things.
Right, they're all things that are taken care of.
Okay, great.
So it does, and, and again, I want to try. MMA is not demanding we fix the whole building, they're not demanding we place all the windows there. Only the immediate things that need immediate attention to remedy, immediate safety.
Okay, on this item, Tim, what do you need from us?
That's why it's just information.
Okay, great. Questions in the panel? Yeah.
I just have one question on page six of the report under the closing comments. It mentions a discussion of grants that are available for participation on work is compensation pool. There's a URL for it, and when I clicked on it, I was unable to launch it. So it says that the grant, the grant cycles have changed. I'd just be curious to know what the grant cycles would look like for their program.
Yeah, maybe that's something that Denise can look into.
Yeah. With grants, the grants from MMA they're talking about, usually that, like, like five hundred, five thousand, I mean, there's something, but.
Yeah.
Huge, okay. Any other question? I just want to help all. Yeah, I want to call it. All right, well, my number four. Uh, new business, so consultants building the scenery for review, so to kind of piggyback off of the previous item. We're aware of some of the issues that we have in this building, I think also the community center too, right? We've got some exterior beside being three issues, so the staff had reached out to civil consultants to come up with us to complete the assessment to figure out all of the details of what we need to open that with cost. So we got a quote back from civil consultant. And the amount, the quote from that was fifty-seven fifty.
Correct. And so, and here, I mean, fire and sign that, send that off, and offer, I think there was only five thousand dollars.
Got it, okay.
And I wanted to send that to MMA immediately to show them the good data, what they told us to do. Well, that's already in the way, this is information only. I want to make sure you saw it in public, in the public document. Probably about fifty-seven hundred fifty dollars. He's going to do all this building, he's going to do the new center as well. And then, but that's not for you here. That's just a, that's giving us the plan, or, or we'll then have to go to a contractor, or put that out as an RFP for someone to do the work.
So what are we anticipating getting back from this review from the open consultants? Like, if I look at the line items, you got private administration, design section. Those are sort of fairly good. I was doing analysis of the plan, the key elements, considering we're going to get back, you know.
They get a report with photographs, will be prepared, they will educate, they will pension and propose a review of work, or very quietly address at this location. Will provide typical construction details to repairs, will do our findings in your office. They will not make design through contract to selection or observation during construction. The proposal will be prepared, bespoke work, as requested by town. So if you want them to, so they're going to tell us, here's what he's prepared. These are the areas in particular. And then we can do, we can put it on RFP, we can hire someone, we can do whatever.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
They're, they're just telling us, I said, Nick, I had, I actually had a guy, I told Saul, talk to John Waterberry. And he called John and asked him exactly what, and then they was looking for, and then, and he asked him why, and he didn't need to. And John said, just stop, you can grizzly see movement, this from side out front, a couple of windowsill, entrance down that. Whatever else, whatever else.
All right, so this item was informational only, any questions there, council? Public, anyone want to comment on this?
But, again, and Spines Hill. I'm just curious. Why do we have to go to consultants, can't we find somebody that doesn't kind of work and just have them tell us what needs to do, and hire them? Everything has to be secondhand.
MMA said they wanted a civil engineer.
Oh, thank you very much, that answers it.
To inspect the building, then give them a downtown certified notice of what needs to be repaired.
Very good, I didn't catch that in my ear.
Yeah, and I.
You were bad.
And I want to make sure that we got the exact plan, and so that we don't do any extra that we don't need to. So that the citizens and the residents don't think you're trying to go off and fix the whole building, you're not, you're just trying to fix the stuff that's from it.
Thanks, good, any other comments? We'll go ahead and move on to downtown revitalization plan, RFP. So I think this evening we're just looking for, you all are looking for informational language for us, right? I just have a general question about the. Is it all four pages that the RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
So. I'm sure from my background, so this is all my RFP, I didn't create this, Denise didn't create this, this was created from. I stole this when I was arranging from the town of Pomington, if you haven't driven up Blue Wall. Found by the university domain and headed up Blue Forty, Ranger, that downtown Pomington, just occurred by the university, all light three lights on the sidewalks. The buildings that have the sound like duty, but are really all finished and nice. That was their plan thirty years ago. And so that seems to be a master plan statewide with a lot of communities. To do downtown revitalization, and I used it in a range, it worked well. This is very much the same thermal language from there. I took, Denise created it, I gave her that. Denise, you want to come in, if you want?
Sure, thank you. So this RFP essentially is the consolidation, conglomeration of two or three of the best. RFPs that have gone out throughout various communities in the state, including the ones that Tim just mentioned. Also, I went through the main downtown centers, development centers. Program and talked and worked with those folks. And so essentially, what this is trying to do is to invite folks, consulting firms. To be able to respond to this, to talk about and address a lot of the downtown issues. That will also incorporate all of our studies that we've already done, for example, our, the traffic study. And the comp plan that's in its progress. And we just involve the market analysis as well. And just kind of help the downtown reinvigorate and re-energize itself. We all know, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out, that. That revitalizing a downtown or putting energy in a downtown really brings business into the downtown. And brings business into the community altogether. And so this is what the goal of this project is. And also, without this, we cannot apply for a downtown tax increment financing district. Plain and simple, and so with having the ability to have this in place. We can do a downtown TIF district. So the key here is we already have Route Two Thirty-Six traveling through. The downtown, which is great, but it only has a five hundred foot parameter. And so this way, if we create a downtown TIF district, we can go all the way to the New Hampshire border, go all the way north, south. East, west, and incorporate a heck of a lot more of a district area to be able to qualify. For tax increment financing, so that's the big thing, and my apologies for my voice, I am actually recovering, I'm on like day three of COVID. COVID two, and so anyway, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But I think this is just a really great thing, and I think it's really great that the council. Actually kind of wants to take a look at the parameters that we've defined. Both Tim and I with the, with the requirements of the RFP requirement, so I thank you.
Thank you, Denise, good luck. All right, any? Question, we're gonna look at the documents.
So it is specific, I know it was part of the last meeting. It's very specific in what they're looking for, it does. They are, it does put it there, we're looking for public input, business input. So it is spelling it right out what we're looking for, so it's actually. Pretty good for what we, what we want, hopefully we get someone that the most.
And then it's quickly takes the delay of corporate, the not land, market analysis, traffic study, all those other.
Yeah, it lays it all out.
Thank you, and I think specifically, we wanted that right from the beginning, I guess what I should have thought is. At your last meeting, should I have this entire RFP so that you would understand that, yes, we're gonna pull together. A community-wide group, and that, yes, in fact, that this. Will actually entail extensive public engagement and public input, absolutely.
Any asks, questions, we are. All right. I think you think it looks good, we need to know.
No, I just wanted to get your opportunity to want something different. Let me know the top, then we will send it out tomorrow, and the only thing I would ask is for our two consultants to be on our year committee. You can get whoever you want, tell who that's gonna be, and once we get it back in thirty days, then we'll sit down and go through. What we got back, it's two consults together, a year committee, things out there. This is a critically important piece of everything we're doing, one of the most critical. Because the village is really the center focus for our community. So I really think, this, we've got to pick the right person to do this. The two of you, and then we'll be some of us, and I'm gonna see if I can find a citizen, business citizen. If I be willing to sit on it.
So Chair, if I could just add one more thing, that the folks that met earlier, I met with earlier today. And they were, they didn't mention it, and then folks from MNT Bank were not. Able to unmute themselves to participate, but there is a really wonderful group of momentum. Folks here, business owners in the downtown that are putting together. An event on August twenty-fourth at five thirty PM, and it'll be at the MNT Bank and businesses, and anybody. Who wants to just join in can join, and it's basically a groundswell movement to just. Support economic development and support momentum in that direction, so. I just wanted to put that out there because the folks were unable. To unmute and be able to participate, so again, it's on August twenty-fourth, five thirty PM. At MNT Bank for downtown businesses.
Great, that sounds great. All right, so it looks like, looks like we're good with the language, this will be going on tomorrow, and we'll stay open through Thursday, December seventh. And we'll review, and keep on that, we'll figure out any date. Anyone on that one?
Oh, thank you.
Anyone from the public? Okay. All right, our next three topics are. It's fairly open-ended, I don't have any supporting documents, so first is downtown building safety. Wanted to bring this up.
Oh, so, sorry. So, yeah, in the last meeting, like, as I stated, interviewing the downtown. There was just some certain buildings that. In thinking of revitalization, what also caught my eye was just some potential safety concerns. So I was just wondering if there was any possibility that we could. Review what's going on with downtown, and however adjustments we need to be made, or whoever needs to be contacted. To fix some of these safety issues, I'm just concerned that. Where the town owns the sidewalk. But there's, if over to that, oh, the buildings. If a piece of trim falls on a town's person that's walking on the sidewalk. Who's liable, is it the town because they're on our sidewalk, or is it the business because something fell on that business? So I just want to, and it's liability and safety concerns, and that's really all I was looking for evaluation on.
My thoughts that I'm having, so I'm, I guess I'm sort of wanting to jump back to the downtown revitalization, because we set by. Safety issue. I would think that part of the downtown revitalization would potentially include. Steady improvements to the downtown buildings, and. That's unreasonable to presume, so I think. You know, I think through a lot of the efforts that were already, we are in our, I think that that would be folded into that from a safety perspective, it's like I say, it was. Or immediate being. I don't know what type of jurisdiction or authority we have. That would be a liability perspective, I don't know if you guys can kind of know.
So liability, if. Case like that, something happens. Again, same question you asked me about the transfer station last week. We have liability insurance that covers us, but all our properties are considered use at your own risk. So if you're walking on the sidewalk, you're slipping fall, and slippery is going. You're at that drone risk, and even if we do, we follow back, we say it's all sidewalks, it's at your own risk, people remain. Case of the building falls off. They'll hold the building people liable, that doesn't mean, though, that at a particular point or time. If we see something like that fence out there that was unsafe, it could hurt somebody. We don't, the code enforcement officer can send people letters and say, you know, take an action for some commercial business in a parking building. You can't on private residence, for a commercial building, from the outside, you can't go inside without formal notice. And without a complaint, we're gonna give them twenty-four hour notice, and they're gonna give us permission to come inside. The outside, we could send that along, so I have already addressed the, any piece of the sidewalk that's there, I've already called, stopped, and tried. So I myself will do that, and that's, gonna get that.
And that's it, we're enter at your own risk, town, that's where we're gonna enter at your own risk now.
Well, and actually. What's that?
I don't think that's a, you need to stop working.
So that's main wall.
Yeah, right.
It's made, it's called main wall.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and if they didn't have that, every time somebody fell, you know, on sidewalk, or bent the tires, and on the slippery road, the one that fell, they thought was absolutely right. They'd be suing the towns all the time, so. We have liability protection, everything we own, everything we do is use that drone risk, doesn't mean that we're not negligent. You know, in some particular cases, but use that drone risk.
Any others? I don't have a lot. Yeah, we got to come up with a time.
Sam Clings from Four Oh Six Main Street. In our letter, we referenced a program, it's the Building facade Grant Program. In our, looking at the budget, I think there's thirty thousand dollars currently allocated to that program. And I don't believe it's been worked on to be implemented, I know, looking at Saco's website, which is, I think, where Denise's worked previously, she's developed similar programs. And I think that would, you know, tapping into those funds and utilizing those as soon as possible would help alleviate some of those concerns, so. Just like in our letter, I personally, and our business Happy Valley could definitely benefit from. Being able to utilize some of those funds, and I think other businesses as well, it's a, from what I understand, it could be a matching program. And I think it would tell. These downtown businesses to invest in their business and also give them reason to, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Just so you know, that program Denise submitted, it's made, it's in legal review, and the LTU, next meeting, be here for their approval, I think, while moving. Fast and take him, I'm moving as fast as I can. Denise has created that, we've done a great job of that. It is a beside program that we use the TIP twenty-four, which is exactly kind of what it does, it helps with downtown revitalization stuff, Denise put it together. And that, we're just waiting for one file to move on, still, we should have.
So to be clear. There is no beside program in this town right now, because we haven't seen it crack.
That's cool.
Thank you.
But, again, that facade, Kim, is that the one near the Chinese building that looks like a piece of two by four that's hanging about two and a half feet down, hanging down? That's what I thought, that's happened.
I gave you your name, I almost called you.
I'll help him out.
And any other comments? All right, we're moving on to transfer station, again, this was, I think this came up from our last meeting, from.
Yeah, I, I thought it was, the discussion was finalized in the last meeting, I'm not sure why, it's on the speaker's agenda.
I'd ask, we'd ask you to put it, wanted on the agenda. Oh, you're all good?
Yeah, it was just the counselor comment, I'm reading an email from a constituent, just to see if the lines were. Our solution, and the question was answered, so sorry for the misunderstanding.
Good. I do think. Dear council, I do think, we understand the transfer station in the same way it was in nineteen eighty-five, that it's there. And nineteen eighty-five, they walk into citizens, there we have eight thousand citizens. And I think at some point down the road, we'll talk about capital infrastructure, we need to, we need to start thinking about making that, changing that. I know, everybody, you know, the conversation we had, use it at your own risk, backup at your own risk. But it doesn't mean it can't be updated, doesn't mean it doesn't make sense to provide lots of money aside to do that.
Is. What am I trying to ask, is in the transfer station part of any of the TIF districts that is planned or well come planned?
It, it, you have to, I almost got hit in the head today. I'm not a small guy, and I almost got hit in the head. So it happens, in the transfer station, you have to have your head on a swivel. And unfortunately, you have to have your head on a swivel, a lot of people don't look where they back up. And a lot of people that their licenses somewhere other than they, where you don't have the driving test, where you have to pay a little price to back up, so. It's not so, I know, but it's, you just have to, you have to care, it's not a great layout, it ever has been a great layout, and someday it will be, or a real way. But it just, it's really, unfortunately.
Yeah, totally agree, I think this is definitely kind of on our. I, I don't even want to put a number on it, but like a plan for the future. I think that some of the changes that we made recently, this part, implementing stickers, try to reduce the volume of people who are not the sufferer, putting in there. Hopefully, you know, that might have an effect on maybe, I think, I just wanted to commend the staff of the transfer station, I think we're doing the best what we've got, which is. We all know it's not the most ideal layout.
They are.
We're doing what we can to make it work and be as easy as possible, but it's not. It's definitely not ideal right now.
So, and I agree, I want them to staff, I go up every week and track them on Saturdays. And there isn't a day I don't see, every Saturday, they're always hustling one guy or the next, helping people upload stuff. They're very, they're very helpful, very, you know, working out, mitigating people, they're the dog, just this dog. I don't know if they give out batteries, just to check them.
Volley cops for the kids.
Volley cops for the kids, well, they do a great job, but, yes, it is on, so the Council of Costello's thoughts, it is in our capital improvement plan. Somewhere down the road, it's done, can't leave facilities for more than thirty, thirty-five years. That, you know, fire station comes up, the police station, the library, so down all. Of, you know, all the worst budgets we've helped here, so now you've got town hall, transfer station. And eventually the fire station, all those we need, that's been the problem, right, we've won twenty, thirty years, so it's okay. And now we need to replace oil, we need to fix chimney, we need to fix grilling. We've got to stay on top of it, so we're gonna cap the project, how long, whatever that is.
Okay, anyone from the public want to talk about it? Go ahead.
Hey, Dave Bradley, four hundred, Emery's Bridge Road. Um, I just have a comment about the transfer station. Um, I know they made some changes when COVID was, um, you know, with us. And one of the changes is they stopped cars from driving over to the plastic area where you get rid of your plastic bottles and jugs and stuff, and now you have to park up top, the hill, and walk all the way down, down, they, they painted it a walkway on the pavement, you have to walk all the way down to the plastic area, get rid of your plastic bottles and jugs, and walk all the way back up. Well, that's great for a nice, young, healthy person, but have you ever watched elderly people trying to do that? Or, um, people with arthritis or other ailments, or like myself, I've had both hips replaced, it's not easy. And I don't know why they won't allow anyone to, you get rid of your stuff up top, your trash, your cans, your glass, your cardboard, you, you know, not your cardboard, but your newspapers. Then you should be able to drive down on your way out and get rid of your plastics, but it's not allowed. So I drove down there one time and I caught hell, so.
We'll, we'll look at it, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any others have any comments on transfer station? Okay, uh, our last word of business meeting is to schedule a workshop cadence for town hall session, because we had a public here, decided for your workshop, uh, a couple of weeks ago, on the town hall topic, and I think everyone's well aware, this is a big project for us for the first year of the year, I think it will be, so, uh, maybe it'll be approved for the council meeting regularly, we had kind of thrown out last time, uh, meeting monthly on the first, first Tuesday of the month, um, that's where I'll be, so I'll run that up there, and that's all the work for everyone to do our workshop on the first Tuesday of the month. So that would put our next one at two day, September fifth, or two day after, they write. Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to schedule a monthly workshop for the town council to meet, to discuss the town hall project, uh, the first Tuesday of each month at six thirty, six o'clock, what do you like?
So, does anybody have any, I'd rather go at six.
At six o'clock here in town hall, third floor, um, to be adjusted, canceled as needed, so there'll be some flexibility there, we'll have that standing timeline and, uh, make an effort to communicate with the public if there's ever a situation where we're not going to be meeting, uh, at cadence, or we can't, so. That's all then.
So, or second, right?
We have a motion in second, any suggestions? All those in favor? I have done.
I.
Yeah.
I.
That's good.
I.
I, motion satisfied, zero, see you down at the bit. Um, and that wraps up all of our business, um, we're now ready for Tina Jen to give us her.
The town manager report for August eighth, twenty twenty-three. The highway five roadside mowing, working on ditching washouts. Um, wider road lane, finishing up, they've paid, the shoulders are done, lawns are all seeded, the new F five fifty foul truck will be going to be outfitted on nine one, should be completed by the end of September. Police department had six arrests, five traffic accidents, eleven traffic stops. Um, they picked up the new crews that you saw tonight. Um, and then August, the town will be hosting the educational road show, rebuilding our community after pandemic, put on by York County All-Use Task Force. Um, it's on the web, information can be on the P D website. Fire department had seventeen calls year to date, uh, ascending calls, year to date, the three hundred and twenty-six. Deputy Chief Lorman is leading a recruit, a recruitment committee, he's working on the upcoming recruitment drive, we're looking for three or four new active members to fill out the roster, recruitment drive is going to run through the fall. With the newer group class, it works to begin over the winter twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, making final preparation for the two-day training at the Red Bond this coming weekend. There'll be heavy fire department presence in that area, they're operating that as a training line. Throw in the possibility of both days, they hired an outside training company, uh, with Dutch national certification coming in with them, training on a bunch of fire tactics and so forth. Uh, all the apparatus is in service, including the new rescue boat. They trained on, um, they have two boats with water work to be done on tank number three, the tank truck, the, uh, carriage, the, the tank cradle underneath, it holds three thousand gallon tanks custom. And they're afraid of a ship going down the road, so gonna have to get that repaired, they're waiting for a third boat to come back and they're putting fire apparatus. And we'll see what that is and get that back to the boats. Code enforcement, five building permits been issued, five surrenderments, twelve law consubventions issued, five plumbing permits, and twelve in health meetings. The planning, one item is still at its preliminary stages in front of the planning board. L D two thousand three public hearing as well, there were a lot of questions. Uh, still a lot of meetings held on seven twenty-six with Jay, the doctor, and Jenny, and the admin assistant, Matt.
At the library, the dark count for July was at three thousand. Summer reading program has been wrapped up and advanced to eighty fifty people attending. Teddy has, is giving great success with the consistent attendance in his writers group. Um, Bethany, Brenna is hosting A T Y I ice cream event by the second of the library. Recreation, they can get the sheds and fields last week and reorganized everything. Challenger soccer camp will be held in multi-purpose fields this week, there'll be about a hundred kids participating in that. The AC unit at the community center has been replaced and is now back up and running. The community center has also been receiving a lot of requests for rental recently. Ice maker, fixing valve was replaced, but now the ice machine is broken, um, they just found some luck today, it shouldn't be worth their time. The seniors program has been very well attended, thirty-five seniors attended, class was planned by on the eighth. The seniors also entered a summer wild party last Wednesday. The next trip is to Corvette U W review at Clasters York. And they received seventy-five new applicants membership, I think that's great. Uh, much more, and walk in their shoes, a dementia expert is used a simulator to help caregivers give experience as to what it's like to do a better understanding and empathize, uh, for the people that are taking care of, that's going to be taking place Wednesday on September sixteenth and eleventh. Brenna and assessing has created a document, how to read the trio evaluation report. It will be uploaded to the assessing webpage, this provides a line-by-line explanation of how to read the evaluation report. A report for each property will be created after the commitment and uploaded to the website as a new feature. This will help property owners to understand how many property is valued, as well as provide an opportunity for them to review the data for access. Also provides information that many infrasiders, real estate agents, brokers, contractors, and others looking for disinformation will not even have to come to their office, they'll be right in their fingertips. This report has all the standard information as a property record card, but it is much easier to read and show calculations. She is working on quality control of the maps that are active for this public first, let's set the vision, law lines, et cetera. Enter many inquiries from the public, the questions are ranging anywhere from how taxes are calculated and how assessing works and personal property exemptions, current use, and helping to resolve map acreage inaccuracy. Many of these do require in-depth review of any information that they provide her. Working on ownership changes, um, they have to be kept in a spreadsheet until after the commitment, which that, we should be done this week, after, I don't know, right? And town clerk's office, Barbara is working on a step-by-step instructions for all the daily, weekly, monthly reports, new meetings, council agendas, and supporting documentation and elections for the next town, but they have issued over twelve hundred transfer station stickers and received two sets of notification papers for the council and one for the school board. The transfer station got new security cameras installed, and they are working on, right there, here, E T C. Stickers are working as the uptown traffic has been down for that. Denise has been working on the comprehensive plan, wrapping up inventory piece, she touched on that a little bit ago. Also aiming to do the downtown beside comprehensive program, that's due anyway in September. And that is the fifty fifty match for the maximum grant of ten thousand. Starting a comprehensive business retention and expansion and visitation program, late September, early October. Community finance, H R safety, um, I'm waiting on three more window votes to be able to provide to the council, so that we will have a sample to review. Worked with the assessor and figures on the spreadsheets that you guys saw at the assessors meeting, and certainly worked pretty a lot back. Meetings with Jay Readymarker and P M I regarding Christmas storm, we have a new person that got assigned to our project, we have spent many hours with her over the last few weeks, getting a lot of documentation, pictures, bureau records, and all that information put together for them. I've also been working with Ford Credit and with lawyers for the two new pieces that we already have. Those are the those loose, and also working on getting a new elevator quote, um, either just furnished or replaced completely, and also working on quotes to get the videos better for the town hall.
For our admin, uh, town manager meetings and appointments, in the last meeting, I've had fifteen meetings and appointments. Uh, met with Jenna and Denise, we discussed downtown revitalization plan. Jenna and Denise reviewed the following for the support city architecture, we're waiting on. Met with the software reporter, the urban contact area. Uh, worked with Dawn, the general, and Dawn did the general assistance audit on seven twenty-seven, when we learned compliance. Met with Denise, who set out priorities to develop programs, economics, develop mini, review and discuss downtown beside grant program, discuss market analysis. Um, also comprehensive plan, that was council sale, the comprehensive plan and the proposed back call it. Uh, we set up the Google analytics for the website on A three that you guys had asked about. Uh, and because it hadn't been done before, it starts on A three, so we're gonna be getting the information. Was suggesting we will wait a month before we start analyzing the data. Uh, Mary's sleep chimney service is scheduled to redo the chimneys in term of twenty-second. We spent a lot of time working on no rate options. M M A sent us a letter. And basically, it's a, uh, municipal official, the place and office, town cell clerk, who's received a five thousand one hundred and fifty dollar dividend check from the main municipal association because of its good performance and loss prevention program. Main municipal association office, and it goes on to say what it is. Um, I want to thank the the employees, the safety committee, the safety team, and all the safety stuff, the work paid off there to, we're getting a five thousand dollar difference back. So, it, the program's well. Um, we talked to the attorney, volunteer free work, you guys had asked about it, the workshop was all set to go, it does recommend a contract. Or if you have some of the offerings, we free work for us, who wants to deal with that, but Phil said absolutely, just make sure that we put it in a agreement, a contract that says, you know, there's no talks to the others. Um, met with Jay, working on the rooftop H rack system for the auditorium, it is, it does work, we wanted some parts work, and we're hoping to be this week. And I met with Jay and Jen to discuss the prior results. Yesterday, the zoning board of Fields had, um, formal training by town legal council, went very, very well, they elected a new chairman. And the zoning board of Fields appears to have changed. And it's so good.
The planning board is there too.
And some of the planning board, the planning board is there as well. Um, in response to your answer for, at your workshop, where you, uh, Council of Costello asked about the code requirements for commercial buildings, the, uh, I finally, Jen, I finally had time to make something. They'll ask me to take one pass down, and your record, I'll send it to you chronically. Uh, she writes that renovating existing commercial buildings, main uniform building energy codes, now there are a couple of codes that will be used during the design renovation phase, renovating an existing building, how? This is not particular to whose building, this is for every commercial building. So you can see the list there, there's fifteen codes that it has to me, telling me everything, basically what they are, and she did say that if, if you came to a point where you needed more information, she would be happy to come sit in front of you, give you general information for this. So hopefully that helps answer your question. Last piece is this is yep, it's one of these, after, this is the analytics, what we've done so far. See if I can get this right. So, the first page, it looks like this. See this, with the red circles on it. Um, this is showing you, and there's a hundred and thirty tabs that can be tracked on the left-hand side printed that you buy pages by title of screen class. Shows us user activity over time, so in seven days, you've had seven hundred and eighty-two hits. So in seven days, you've had seven hundred and eighty-two hits. To get the information you're looking for, if you go to the second page, it shows you the hundred and thirty tabs, and you'll see the one that's highlighted. Government town council, town hall project information, and then you go across and you read views, users, so forth, so it's been, since we started doing it, uh, beginning of August, it's been fifteen views and eleven users. So that gives you kind of an idea. So I, I think the end result is using this information, I think getting and making a video would be an extremely important concept. Moving, whether it's renovating or doing something different going forward to the public to have access. That is my mandatory report, I don't care, any questions?
Fairly like this information, I think so. Um, thank you for following up, I think you talked about that a lot to you, um, I don't have a question, thank you guys. Alright, hold on to your possible comments. Actually, do you have one question? I know that, I noticed there was a work stopping from the ninety-one to thirty-six intersection, to the best of your knowledge, is that project still on practical completion?
As far as I know, the end of itself, the last report I got was, they're finishing, planning on finishing wrapping up. Um, sometime late September or October, not December. That's the last report I got.
Uh, I'd like to thank Chief Burger for bringing the new patrol car by tonight. Uh, his input for twenty years, the patrolman really paid off for the safety features for, for our people, um, the lighting package on the car, the rest of the safety for the car. For the rest of the town, they're now going black police cruisers. So if you're out riding around, you have to look for white and black now. Uh, the reason it's going for black is they looked into statistics, most of our accidents in the winter, you can't see a white police cruiser on the road in winter. They're hard, it's hard to see it, so they went with the black, plus it looks really nice. But, uh, if you have time, if they're stopped somewhere, not busy, ask them to check it out, it is a really, really nice, nice view. And again, thank you to him and our new patrolman, new IR, you're kind of saying. And Jason, Jason, uh, nice young fellow, so we're doing good, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Uh, just, uh, later fest is next, Wednesday, uh, up at Spring Hill, uh, hopefully, it'll be nice and not raining.
And I want to make.
Adam, Jerry, who we adjourned?
Second, I was the neighbor, is that?
I.